I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the April 19th County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. If you have not signed in and would like to speak today, you need to sign in on the little piece of paper over there with name and address. Just makes our recording much easier. If you need a listening device, Carol can help you with that. She's in the front. And our meeting documents are in that white folder next to Commissioner Kerski. That will move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second. Second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is a consent agenda. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Harth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Hiperger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next, this is opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak on something that is not on today's agenda, this would be your opportunity. Good morning, Teresa. Hi. So Teresa Pesch, and I am here to give my public comments about electronic voting and tabulation systems and about how they invite the opportunity for bad actors to do bad things such as bad actors can bring viruses and glitches and manipulate the numbers and manipulate the numbers for a particular candidate or a particular policy. And myself, I represent myself and South Dakota canvassing group, and we also would like to get rid of the would like to remove the electronic voting and tabulation systems and put in paper ballot and anti-counterfeit built-in measures. Also precinct level voting and hand count. So it's not a party position. It's actually because we're a bipartisan group and it's a bipartisan position. So I might need Tyler here to help me with this because I just wanted to play something that's on my phone. Put it on the Elmo. So it's just, I'm just going to show you two short clips. And it's just to show that it's not a conservative or Republican issue. It's also a Democratic issue. All right, can you try it from there?
Virginia just stopped using touchscreen computer voting because it's so vulnerable. Look at all the voting machines. Every secretary of state needs to be, you know, assisted in making sure that they are not being hacked and attacked.
I continue to think that our voting machines are too vulnerable. Researchers have repeatedly demonstrated that ballot recording machines and other voting machines are susceptible to tampering. Even hackers with limited knowledge and resources were able to breach voting machines in a matter of minutes. In 2018, electronic voting machines in Georgia and Texas deleted votes for certain candidates or switched votes from one candidate to another. The biggest seller of voting machines is doing something that
And then I want him to be quiet and then move on to Now I have to move it again.
An unfriendly nation. Let's put the resources into upgrading the state's election systems. Because what we know is this, there are a lot of states that are dealing with antiquated machines, right? Which are vulnerable to being hacked. I sit on the Senate Intelligence Committee and Senate Homeland Security Committee. And we receive all kinds of information about the vulnerabilities to our national security. We are vulnerable in terms of foreign interference with our elections. It's my understanding that some of the election system vendors have required states to sign agreements that prevent or inhibit independent security testing. There's a saying that I'm sure many of you have heard, which is
And so the last thing that Kamala was talking about was actually is, just like Minnehaha has machines that are from a certain company, ESNS. And they test, ESNS tests the security of the machines themselves instead of a third party coming in. And what we did is what South Dakota canvassing did is we asked for open record request and we've got information on the tabulating machines. And so, can you hear me okay? I'm trying to talk loud. Is DS 850 tabulating machines from 2014. Each machine was $111,000 and $111,500. So we've got it from 2014, 2015, and then 2020, we even got another one. So there's $433,000 just for tabulating machines. And then we've got the maintenance. So with the maintenance of the tabulating machines, it comes to $471,000. So when it's told to us that the, that it costs too much money to hire people to actually count the votes is the question is how could it cost more than that? I think you're done with your five minutes. All right, thanks. Thanks for your patience waiting for me to work the phone. Thanks, Teresa. And we'll go on to regular business. Item number 10 is a public hearing for appeal to a decision to the Minnehaha County Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit number 22-27 to allow a Class C hog concentrated animal feeding operation on the property legally described as a southeast one quarter south, excuse me, southwest one quarter southeast quarter section 20 township 104 range or north range 48 west. Mason. Good morning, Mason.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Mason Stefan, Planner One from the County Planning Department. Yeah, so the Planning and Zoning Department has received an appeal of conditional use permit 2227, which as described would allow a Class C hog concentrated animal feeding operation. The address for that property you described is 47964 248th Street. And it's located approximately four miles southeast of Del Rapids. So the property for this request is an existing farmstead and there have been permitted hog confinement buildings on the property since 1983. This request would allow the petitioner to build a new barn and consolidate all of the hog confinement on the property to this new barn. And it would also allow them to expand the number of animal units up to 999, which is the limit of the Class C CAFO. This item was heard at the County Planning Commission on March 28th. The item was on the consent agenda at that meeting and no one moved to move, to take it off the consent agenda. So there was no public hearing or no public testimony, excuse me. And the Planning Commission voted to approve it on the consent agenda with six votes in favor and zero against. The, like I said, the Planning Commission did receive an appeal letter that was signed by eight separate neighbors of the request. And the appeal letter stated that the neighbors were present at the meeting, but they didn't understand how to take an item off the consent agenda. And so they are appealing their request to the County Commission in order for their concerns to be heard. Notice was sent to the same property owners that were sent for the Planning Commission meeting. And the County Commission can either uphold, deny, or amend the Planning Commission's decision. And then with that, I'll go through the PowerPoint a little bit if you want to scroll down a little bit, Trish. So here's the location map. The property highlighted in red is the subject property with the existing farmstead. And you can see off to the east a little bit is the, is a CAFO that the petitioner for this request also operates a little over a quarter mile to the east. And then here is the site plan. It's kind of hard to tell, but on the northwest corner of the property, you can see the giant white box. That's kind of where the proposed barn would be, just to the west of the shelter belt of trees there. And then you can just scroll through this. It's just a little bit of a building plan. And then here is the odor model map. So this is a map that most CAFOs in the county use to determine if residences are outside of the 98% annoyance odor ring. And as you can see on that map, that ring, all the residences are out of it. And then to the northwest, there's that property that just kind of borders the yellow ring. But otherwise, there are no actual residences inside that ring. And then we can keep scrolling down. So here's just a picture of where the proposed barn will be. You can see to the east, the grain bins and the shelter belt of trees. And then I think that should be, all the other pictures are kind of just the same area, the same field. And that should be everything. If you have any questions for me, otherwise the petitioner is here if you would like to hear from him.
Any questions for Mason at this point? Commissioner Kerski.
Expanding from what?
So they were, I guess, they have been existing prior to the ordinance, so they were never actually permitted as a Class A, B, C, D, or D. So they've kind of just had a number on their property. It's never really been a set number because they were
I guess I'd like to hear from the property owner.
Yep, they would have a better idea of what they've had on there, but since it was never permitted, yep.
Thanks, Mason. Okay, this is a public hearing, so we will give an opportunity first for the proponents to speak. Then the opponents will have an opportunity to bring their comments. And then we'll go back to the proponents and they can rebuttal or they can answer any questions that had happened at that time. At that point, then it'll come back to the commission to ask questions and have a discussion for us. So we'll start with the proponents. Is there someone who's in favor of this that would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Nick Simmonsma. I guess, so your question, so that barn on the east side, so that's an old barn. I think it's 31 years old. So that barn will not be in use anymore. So that's why we're building this new barn. The one on the east, the long one.
Okay, the white, okay.
Right there. So that will not be used anymore. Like I said, that's outdated. And I guess, I currently have that barn on the way east side. And I guess I also work a full-time job. I guess my longtime goal has always been to farm full-time. And in our area, it's pretty hard to pick up farm ground. So these hog barns would allow me to quit my job and be able to farm. And last week, me and my fiance met with some of the neighbors that sent in the letter. And we had a good meeting and I believe we went over all the concerns they had and I believe we were able to resolve those. And then I also heard that a couple neighbors were concerned about South Dakota becoming like in Iowa. I don't know if you guys have driven through Iowa. There's hog barns everywhere. Which I guess personally, I don't see that ever happening. For one, I don't know very many farmers or people in general that like to raise hogs. And two, South Dakota, as of right now, we have much more stricter rules than Iowa has. So it's much more harder to get a hog barn up here than it is down there. And I guess if there's any other questions from you guys or anyone else.
We have questions from Nick at this point. Commissioner Kerski.
So you're going to be taking a barn down that's old and putting up a brand-new barn that has all the modern ways to manage the nutrients and waste. And how many, how many hogs are you raising in the old and how many will you be raising in the new?
From the old one, I think we had 600, 700. It kind of varied, which it's only, it's only a half-slatted barn. I'm unfamiliar with that. So you can't put as many pigs in. After raising pigs in that new barn, you don't want to raise pigs in these old barns anymore.
So you're going from 700 to 999 roughly?
Animal units.
Yeah. Yep.
Any other questions for Nick at this point? Okay, thanks, Nick. Is there anybody else that wants to speak in favor of the hog confinement at this point? Okay, then we'll go to the opponents. Is there anyone who wants to speak against this?
My name is Ken Veldkamp. I was one of the group of the neighbors that had concerns of the original approval that was given to Nick Simmonsma. This is, that is why we appealed the decision of the Planning Commission. Since the appeal was given to the county, we have met with Nick Simmonsma. We have asked for third-party nutrient management plan, which is what Nick agreed to do. The other quest we had was to plant trees on the north and west side of the proposed building. Nick told us by the second year of the building use, if the odor was offensive, he would plant trees. Personally, I would like to see the trees planted year one, but we will not be opposed to the conditional use permit if the proposed nutrient plan is followed and the tree planning agreement is followed.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Veldkamp. Excuse me, sorry. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in opposition?
Good morning. My name's Robert Salz. I'm at the Mary Plot, 24684 479th Avenue. I'm one mile north and a quarter, a half a mile west of the proposed site. My family moved here four years ago from central Iowa. Our home has been in our family for 147 years. My wife and I came, we're both from ag families. Selling our home is not an option for us. Living in the country allows us to open our windows, which we do, to enjoy the fresh air and not ambulances and police sirens. Every summer, we have a lot of friends that come stay with us with their campers. And they've commented in the past how nice it is to open their windows and enjoy the fresh air in the country. My personal belief is a half-mile radius does not work in today's landscape. This is not how it should be when thinking about doing something that will affect people and affect you personally, physically, and financially. For this project, trees is a must to try to control the odor from the confinement from day one, not years from now. We have to watch what we are doing. If we continue down the same path, our land and our environment will never be the same. We are the stewards of this land and we must protect it at all costs. Once it's changed, it's almost impossible to reverse. I would like to show from the USDA, wherever that is. It's pop up. The United States, as of 2020, 77 million pigs in the United States of America. In Iowa alone, 25 million. That's one-third of the hog population in one state next door to us. We've had a lot of pressure from neighboring states because they have, now have no options but left to push into the neighboring states for their gain. Let's learn from their mistakes. In closing, the landscape is changing from small farmers every quarter mile to acreages with high home values and investments in those properties, tax revenue. We need to work together, not against each other, side by side, and respect our land, neighbors, and their investments in living in the country. Again, I would stress that trees need to be part of this proposal from day one. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Go back to the proponents. Is there something you would like to say?
Okay, I guess the gentleman that just spoke, his, he wasn't even on my list of certified letters because he's less, more than a half a mile. He's over mile and a half, I guess. So I'm not sure. I guess the South Dakota odor footprint tool, based on how far he is, he'd probably, so the highest it goes is a 99% annoyance-free. And he would probably be more than that. I mean, the odds of him smelling my barn are very slim, which I can't say never because I can't guarantee that. So I guess I don't think a person living that far away should be requesting me to plant trees, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. But he would be 6,500 feet away from the proposed barn. And in my current barn, I use a, which I don't like my, I don't want my barn to smell either. In my current barn, I use a pit treatment, which that helps reduce odor and reduce the crust. And I guess that's all I have to say about that, I guess. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner. Any questions for the proponents or opponents? Otherwise, it's your decision.
Madam Chair, I just want to ask staff to explain that there's a difference between an animal unit and an animal.
Mason.
Yes, so for the Minnehaha County, we determine animal units based on the type of animal. So for the type of animal being used in this operation, which is finisher swine, it's .4 animal units. So 960 animal units is about 2,400 actual head of hog.
Thank you. Mr. Kerski.
I think this would be for staff also.
Okay.
I know there's been some studies regarding trees and their effect on mitigating smell. And sometimes actually planting trees doesn't help dissipate it. It kind of holds it down or around. I mean, is there something that could be addressed? Maybe a study done by SDSU? Or who does that type of thing that says, does planting trees actually help or does it make it worse?
Yeah, I guess, I know the odor model, odor model tool, I think SDSU has done studies on that. But I guess we don't have anything specific to it, but I know in our ordinance, we have, if you plant trees between the operation and the residence, you can reduce your required setback by half. So in our ordinance, it's written as trees reduce smell by at least half. Because for a Class C CAFO, the normal setback would be a quarter mile and so trees would reduce it by half. So it'd be about an eighth of a mile. So that's kind of how we determine it. So I guess in terms of this, since no one's in the quarter mile, adding the trees would just reduce the smell by, I guess, if you want to read the ordinance strictly, by about half when you get farther out. And we can add a condition, like he said, if you want to actually add conditions for trees and for the third-party nutrient management plan, we can. Or if you just want to, however you want to word that. I do have some conditions worded.
Commissioner Bender.
I have a follow-up question for the proponent.
Sure.
So are you willing to abide by the conditions that the first gentleman addressed, this third-party nutrient plan?
Yeah, which I guess I provided him with, with that already, I guess. I met with him yesterday and we worked that out already.
Okay. And the, and the requirement that trees be planted if there's an odor issue?
Down the line, because with these barns, that first year, you can't really go off it because the bacteria hasn't built up in, in the pit. So they kind of smell the worst that first year. But after that first year, I mean, it's very little smell. Which I guess, I drive up to my barn and I don't smell it until I'm halfway up my yard most days. And then the thing about the, with the trees, I guess I've done some online research. And it's not so much the trees, like they haven't really proven that trees reduce odor. The biggest thing that will reduce odor is distance. And he's over a mile away, so he will not smell that barn most. I mean, there might be a slight chance, but over 99% of the days out of the year, he will not smell that barn.
So to circle back to the agreement that you would plant trees, if any of your neighbors complain you would plant the trees, is that
We kind of talked about if it's last, I mean, because there's going to be days where a neighbor might smell the barn if the wind's blowing just right or if the, or if it just rained maybe. But, so we kind of talked about if it smells for 72 hours, I think, straight. And then I would come up there and then we talked about having a third party come up there. Which I don't want my barn to smell either. I don't want to have a bad reputation in the area either. So I guess that's why I said I would be willing to plant trees down the line if there was a issue.
Commissioner Kerski.
And then I guess
Where do you live from the property?
I live currently two miles west and two miles north.
Okay, thank you.
Which I guess, the long-term goal, I would probably end up living there.
On the, on the property?
Or close by.
Has anybody ever complained about smell from your
Yeah, and then that's one more thing. I told them too, when I met with them, I've had that barn for six years. Not once have I received a phone call or knock on my door saying that my barn smells or anything like that.
There's no trees around that. I have a nursery a mile from my house. I've never smelled it. And it's on the north side of my home. Never smelled it.
Yeah. And then nurseries, they kind of smell worse too because there's less air movement with those small pigs, I guess, is what I've kind of have learned.
Additional questions for staff or proponents or opponents? For motion.
I'd be willing to make a motion to approve with the two additional stipulations that were agreed to between the two parties.
I would second that motion.
So I just want a little clarification. So we have a third-party nutrient plan, but when do we, are we expecting these trees?
My understanding was, and you guys should jump up and tell me, because my understanding was that is in the second year, if there are complaints about smell and the smell lasted longer than 72 hours, then the property owner would agree to plant trees on the north and west side? Wow, I get extra points for memory, being able to read my writing.
Nick, are you agree with that? Okay, and then I have one more question, just for clarification. How are we going to decide how many trees? Are we going to leave that up to the landowner, whether it's one row or two rows of evergreens or deciduous trees? Or we leave that up to them to decide? Because they could go work with the Minnehaha County Conservation People.
Probably do what they would recommend.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and I think we have some clarification on that motion. Do we need a roll call? We need a roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Harth.
Aye.
Hiperger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming, folks. Move on to item number 11, is authorize the agreement with Charlie D. Smith, Architectural and Planning for the William H. Lyons Fairgrounds Task Force, Carol Muller. And we have Charlie on the phone. So Carol's going to start, Charlie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. The action before you today is to authorize an agreement with Charles D. Smith, Architecture and Planning, for the William H. Lyons Fairgrounds Task Force. In your documents, you will find an agreement between Minnehaha County and Mr. Smith for a two-day workshop with the task force on May 2nd and 3rd. A description of work is in the agreement, which includes various meetings and reviews. The agreement is for $7,000 plus expenses. And this is a two-day workshop, which is only the first step in this process. So not everything's going to get taken care of during these two days in this contract. As a result of the two-day workshop, next steps will include a second agreement with Smith and determination of additional resources such as surveys, engagement of an engineer and architect, economic study, and stakeholder meetings. These next steps will include additional meetings and engagement for the task force. Smith has had extensive work with fairs and events, including last year's master plan for the South Dakota State Fair. I would just point out a couple things within the contract. And during the time, during these two days, this, in this agreement, some of the things that the contractor, which is Smith, will be doing. Meeting with county officials, task force members, community officials, key fair staff members. Look at the organizational structure, mission statement, goals, objectives, the fair and non-fair attendance. Review future facility needs to accommodate potential growth and to improve the existing event. This could be in the form of a hypothetical plan or a site-specific plan. And again, I'm not covering everything on here, but discuss next steps and market demand, economic study for the future development. So a lot of this is just getting started with it and then getting ready for the next steps that are out there. Did want to mention that as part of this, there are obligations for the county that we need to do, including a scaled map for the existing site and listing of current and facilities with sizes if possible. Charlie's been working for probably about three weeks right now with GIS on getting everything together. So that process is already underway. A list of four or five significant issues to be addressed during this workshop. And I think just as an umbrella with that would be things like a master plan, economic, the economic impact, which is looking at the community overall, which, what is the impact of the fairgrounds and the fair on the community? The infrastructure at the fairgrounds and then financial analysis of current and future of the actual fair itself and the grounds and what needed from that particular point. And any questions you may have? And Mr. Smith is on the line also, can answer any questions.
Okay. Commissioner, is there any questions on this contract? I'm seeing none. Oh, Commissioner Kerski. Oh, Commissioner Kerski?
Yeah, I guess my question would be, I know fairs operate with different economic goals or plans. For example, I think Commissioner Heiburger, you said the Brown County Fair basically produces actual profit to the county. And just the scope of the operation, what are we doing that we could be doing differently as far as running the fairgrounds and that type of thing? And I don't know if that's what we're talking about when we talk about the financial and economic.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so, just want to make sure that's included in there to make sure that we are getting the return on the investment that we're putting into our fairgrounds.
Digging in the weeds.
Deep into the weeds, I hope.
Any other questions on the contract or questions for Mr. Smith, who is on the phone?
I would make a motion, I'm sorry.
No.
I would make a motion to approve the contract as it's written.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Smith, we will be moving forward and I will let you sign off if you want. And you can catch up with Carol or Tyler later. So thank you for your time this morning.
Thanks very much for the process.
We'll move on to item number twelve, which is the Public Advocates Annual Briefing. Good morning, Julie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Julie Hofer from the Public Advocates Office. And for the general public, maybe just an explanation of what my office does. We are an office that takes conflicts from the Public Defender's Office, conflicts from the Public Defender's Office. We do court-appointed.
Just pick it up and hang it back.
That's fine, sorry. Court-appointed criminal defense. And that includes abuse and neglect cases, appeals, habeas's, and juvenile cases. So looking at our numbers from last year, they pretty much stayed consistent with two thousand and twenty. So last year, we opened two thousand five hundred and fifteen cases and we closed two thousand five hundred and four. The office expenditures or my budget ended up being one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, basically one million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But our attorneys billed ours totally eight hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That would have went out as liens. The breakdown of the cases, the majority of the casework is misdemeanors and felonies. And those pretty much stayed similar as well. We have one attorney that exclusively does abuse and neglect work and one attorney that exclusively does habeas and appeals. And he has also started to do juveniles as well due to traveling back and forth and our schedules and where we need to be during the day. So I do this every year, but just, there's different guidelines that you can look to to show what a full caseload is for an attorney. They all say that for felonies, an attorney can handle one hundred and fifty per year, misdemeanors four hundred, A and N cases are eighty, juveniles are at one seventy-five, and appeals and habeas corpus are thirty-seven. So our office has seven attorneys. And basically, if you look at those numbers, we're doing the equivalent of work of ten point seven-five attorneys. We're able to handle it. Our office luckily has a very low turnover rate. We have veteran attorneys in our office. Four of the seven attorneys in our office have twenty-plus years of criminal defense experience. And everyone at the office is committed to providing quality legal representation for the county.
Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome. Any questions?
Commissioner Bender?
I'm just curious, you know, so your cases opened have gone down a little bit?
Yeah.
And they're consistent the last two years, but they've gone down a little bit. And the number of cases closed has gone up. And I'm just curious if you think that's a longer-term trend? If you were able to close more cases just because you had to open fewer cases?
Well, and I looked at that as well. And so in two thousand eighteen, we had only closed eighteen hundred, but had opened twenty-six hundred. So then those cases are then spilling into two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, just cases that are taking longer to work their way through the system. Most of the abuse and neglect cases are going to be one to two, even three-year cases. Habeas's and appeals can go that long as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. Additional questions for Julie? Commissioner Barrett?
Madam Chair, thank you. I, you know, I think that, just to make it clear to the public how this works, we have a public defender and a public advocate. And sometimes there's more than one defendant on a case. And when there's more than two, then we wind up hiring outside attorneys. And so the state's attorney has to play with all of those people on these cases. And, you know, if Gerald and I were charged with a crime and we don't want the public advocate to sell me down river just to save Gerald, so we have a different.
You're guilty.
Yes, I am. But the point being that to make it a Chinese wall between the two defendants, we have two defense groups. And then there's a third outside attorney for more than that. Additionally, I would say that while the Minnesota statistics indicate we should have more representation, I think Louisiana, there's like three for the whole state. And people go years without meeting with their defense attorney. So, you know, we could find a study from another place that's different. There's also places where there is no charge for having a public defender. We charge people who commit crimes with their legal services. And so, once you get out of, once you're found not guilty, you still may owe Minnehaha County five thousand bucks for the defense that you received. And we have excellent defense attorneys who are motivated to defend you. And anyway, those are just a couple of things I think that need to be clear to the public.
Thanks, Jeff. Additional comments? And I would say, I think we're the only public defender office and public advocate office in the state of South Dakota unless there's maybe one more.
I believe Pennington County may have a conflicts office.
And a lot of states also are the ones that are the funders, which in South Dakota, the counties are the funders.
Right. And others have state-funded.
Right.
But I would just say, Commissioner Barth, I don't think we want to set our standards as Louisiana's.
If there's no more questions, thank you, Julie, for your time.
Thank you.
Move on to item number thirteen, which is the Treasurer's Office briefing by Chris Swanson.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chris Swanson, County Treasurer. So I can tell you, last year was kind of a blur. This year, we've had a lot of changes and they've been good changes, I believe. We started having two windows open at seven-thirty in the morning, which really kind of amazes me how well that has turned out. We've got more and more people starting to come in earlier, which really leaves that bottleneck that we get right away in the morning. The staff even enjoy that because they get to get off at four-thirty then, the two that get started early. But it's really been a positive. I really think that's been a good move. We have signage in the hallway, which it tells us what people need to bring in, when they're going to do a title transfer, or what they need for, you know, registrations, all that kind of thing. So we have a sign when you first come in the door, you'll see it straight ahead, big signs. And then there's a TV on the wall that you see it. We also have it on our website. But I'm still kind of frustrated with the fact that we still have quite a few people that come in with not the right paperwork. So I don't know how to educate beyond what we're doing right now. I've got to put a little bit of thinking into that and how I can educate the staff or the public even more as to how to be prepared when you come in. Because they'll stand in line, they come up to the window, you don't have the paperwork and they've already been standing there for ten, fifteen minutes and then they're not happy. Most of the people that do that, though, are out of state. So I'm glad that at least our Minnehaha County people are figuring out that, hey, there is information there on how to and what to have before we come in. So that's been positive. If you've noticed, if you've been down, we put some stickers on the floor, which surprisingly has helped a lot. I am surprised how many people actually look down now and, oh, we go down the middle row. So that was quite a, I have a video in my office on the computer. And I'll sit there sometime and I'll just shake my head like, no, don't do it, don't do it. Go down the middle, go down the middle. And they're finally getting it, so. We've got, we've hired three part-time tax and licensed technicians. One has just recently started. We've got one starting tomorrow and then one starting May second. So I'm pretty excited about that. That'll help us to fill in the blanks during the lunch break. And then when we do have a full staff, I plan on taking my, some of the tax and licensed technicians, pull one or two of them in the back during the busiest over the lunch hours and have them answer phones. Because that is our hardest time during that lunch hour to get those phones answered. And since, we took two of our accountants, Liz and Ellen, who are accountants down there, we have now actually giving them more accounting responsibilities. So they're a big asset to our Assistant Treasurer right now. But taking them away from what they were doing and doing more accounting work, which they should be doing, we have, it's kind of left our phones a little bit edgy. And so I'm working on fixing that. We're also cross-training more of our staff to be able to do other responsibilities when someone is ill or wants to take a vacation. When it gets busy right now, we're doing taxes, property taxes. And so it's kind of hard to cross-train. But we are getting some of that done, which has been really beneficial too. Because then I can just say, hey, I need you back here and it works great. And if any of you have been in our office lately, you've seen that we have cleaned a lot of it out. A lot of it has gone over to the, I keep wanting to call it the old jail, but what is it?
Public safety building.
Public safety, okay, the public safety building. And so we put a lot of stuff over there. We have labeled everything very carefully. So it looks like a brand-new office already. Looking really forward, looking forward to getting our new stuff in there eventually here. But then we're going to a few of the statistics. Since we started charging that twenty-dollar fee, so it's a twenty-dollar fee with a five-dollar for mailing, we started that last April first of twenty, it should have been twenty-twenty-one. We have actually brought in sixty-eight thousand dollars. So that's been really nice. With Amazon coming in, they've been our biggest supporter. So we processed four hundred and, five hundred and fifty, five hundred and forty-five applications for the elderly and disabled tax freeze that started in the middle of January and ended April first. And we did roughly twenty-five abatements and they were coming in. I mean, it was a constant revolving door there for a while. Since we have closed, April first was the deadline, we have still had quite a few calls on people still wanting to apply. So I'm taking names, addresses, yep, and we're getting, telling them I will be sending applications out next year to them. A lot of them heard about the five hundred dollar refund coming from the city. And so that's, they called our office about that, which in turn, we got them on this, helped them get started on this, because they can't get that until they actually have qualified for this for a year. So that's been a big asset. Our collection of NSF funds, when we started here, forty-three thousand dollars, and we are now down to fourteen thousand dollars. We've been able to start putting blocks on the South Dakota cars' accounts for those that have written bad checks, which we've got a handful of them now. So when people come in, if they haven't written or given us a, paid off their bad check, it'll come up on their screen saying, you know, you have a financial responsibility. We cannot take your money. And until it's cleared up, we can't do any business with them, which I think has been very positive, yeah. And the state's been working really well with us on that. Some of those we won't be able to collect just due to the, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
So if somebody wrote you a bad check and they go to, they cannot renew their tags on their vehicle until they clear that up? Is that what you're telling me?
Yep, if, once the South Dakota cars puts a block on it, because they haven't paid, they can't do anything.
Okay.
Which, that is the only way we have been able to get any action.
Good strategy.
Yeah, so.
But then from renewing their driver's license? I know you don't renew very often, but I think that's another thing, it blocks.
Yep, I mean, so they come down to our office and they're not happy. But it's like, well, until this is cleared up, we cannot do that. You know, it's one thing to get a bad or an NSF check with a property tax because we can stop, we can take that back, you know. But as far as when you hand out a license plate or you hand out a tag, it's now in their possession. We can't, we can't go grab that back, you know, and so. But no, it's been working well and we're staying on top of it. And so I guess one of our strategies is, I, once we get it, I make a phone call to that person. And they always say they're going to be down there the next day to come and pay it off. But that doesn't happen. And so then we say, okay, here's what happened. It goes to the sheriff's office after that. And then after they don't pay them, then we get a block. And it's been working well, so. But we've come down quite a bit and that makes me very happy. So our population obviously continues to grow. We're seeing, on average, we're doing six thousand titles a month and we're taking about twenty-seven hundred phone calls monthly. And that's pretty steady. At this point, we have about eight hundred and thirty-eight parcels that are delinquent on the twenty-twenty-one taxes payable twenty-twenty-two, which is about two percent of the taxable parcels. However, with interest, that is still four million dollars that we have done delinquent taxes out there. But since we've started actively collecting from one, from January of twenty-one to March of twenty-two, we have collected about one point three, I have it, I don't have it on my, thirteen million, I'm sorry, thirteen million dollars. We've been collecting, yeah, been really active and working hard on that. There are over one billion dollars in building permits last year and close to four hundred thousand so far this year. So every house built means a visit to our office, either for property taxes or for a vehicle or multiple vehicles. And you can just see the growth of the city just by driving out on our streets anymore. Plats, we still continue to get quite a few plats coming in and we're cross-training on that. So I, we've got three of us now that do plats, which is very, very nice. So I've learned how to do those. And then, so then just plans for our future. So, and I've mentioned this earlier, since we've taken two of our accountings and our accountants and we're training them to perform more accounting functions, we've now created issues with needing another employee in the back. Now, this is, like I said, a briefing only. I'm still contemplating other ways to make this work before I actually put this into a budget. So give me some time on this, but I'm, I think I've got some ideas that I'm working with. But I'm just putting this in here for now, just to keep in mind that this could be a possibility for us. One of our biggest concerns right now is our tax deed process. We're struggling with keeping up on that. I don't believe that we have, what is the word I want to use? We need somebody that is qualified for this position. There's a lot of legalities that go into it, a lot of research that goes into it. And I just don't think we have that kind of skill set in the staff that we have currently. We've got very good workers, but on this particular project, I just think we need somebody that is willing to dig in, willing to, that has maybe a little bit of experience in some sort of area like this. I mean, some of the legalities that are listed, like legal notices, if the parcel is a part of an estate, the owner's deceased, all of this just creates a whole new realm of trying to get this tax deed done. So that being said, another future plan, our new South Dakota car system software, they said was supposed to start in May. I have not heard anything yet. We do have a workshop now in Pier that first week in May. And we'll find out more on that, our first week, yeah, first week in May. So we'll hear more about what their plans are for that and when we're going to start. I'm hoping they wait till the fall, so, because there's a lot to learn on that, too. So any questions?
Any questions for Chris? Commissioner Barth?
First, Chris, let me thank you for your work. Things look great down there. So what paperwork do people mess up the most on? Is it the auto transfer?
They will never, they won't have a bill of sale. The title will be not, well, what happens is what they'll do is they'll fill out the title before they come in where it's not supposed to be. And so then they have to, there's an affidavit they have to fill out. It's just a lot of paperwork after paperwork. But you know what? Actually, the bill of sale is the biggest issue. And I think that would be, you think, probably one of the simplest things to remember. But.
And so what are most of your phone calls about? Do people call up and say, what hours are you open?
What do I need to bring in for a title transfer? Yeah, that is a big one. And then in January, February, and March, we had a lot of the elderly, elderly tax freeze. That was non-stop. And then when they heard about the five hundred dollar refund, rather than calling the city, they called our office. So that created another issue of being on the phone quite a bit.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
So how do I get the five hundred dollar refund?
Come down to my office and I'll, you know. Yeah.
All right, thanks, Chris. Commissioner?
I just have a couple of comments and I happen to be her liaison, I guess, resource this year. But I've been impressed with your ability to manage that office, be flexible. I've also noticed that the lines are shorter. And the other thing is, less complaints that I'm aware of. And more importantly, I think I can tell the environment in the office because your leadership has been very positive.
Thank you.
And implementing some of the USD Business School research that they did has been an ongoing process. We're probably not going to do everything, because maybe we don't agree with everything.
Right.
But the majority of that is in process. And again, your flexibility and like, strength of leadership has been awesome for us, so thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Kurski.
Echo Commissioner Benning, our past administration didn't answer the phone. And it forced people to come down and made the lines longer. And if just answering the phone and telling them, bring this, this, and this, makes your line shorter and makes them not have to come back two times, I mean, that just makes a lot of sense, and it's great, great management, administration. I'm curious on the tax deeds, though. I know the auditor's office works a lot on tax deeds, too. How, is there a way you could coordinate a position between the two offices so that you'd have one individual that would, could coordinate that effort, I guess? I'm not too sure.
Something I have to visit with Ben about, but I know, I think we're both kind of wondering how we would. It's going to take some thought. I, I actually have some ideas with, even with, well, I don't even want to get into that. We're just gonna, something I'm thinking about on, on handling it. I'm hoping it will come into fruition, but I've got kind of a little plan.
Just sitting up here, it seems to me that we hear a lot of the same things from both of you at different times, so we just encourage that, that working together, and.
Yep.
I think you'd probably get a better reception up here when you talk about adding a person.
Right, no, I understand that, yep.
I have one final question. Chris, you live out in the country, and you've been in the animal business.
Yeah, that gave me a little PST, PTSD back there, I'm telling you. I sat there like, oh, I could just feel my biscuit.
How bad is it out there? I don't feel it is bad.
I, I, I don't think it's bad at all, but I'm a farm girl, and so along with a farm girl, you're gonna, I guess I think, you get the smells, you get, you get that stuff, but it is not, I, I have never, like, we even had that hog farm that's right, just, you know, I'm talking about the NH Hog Farm there. I really never smell that. I really never do. And they've probably got some of the poorest, I shouldn't say, poorest.
Older buildings, yeah, some of the older buildings.
Yeah, and so, and I'm thinking, I don't ever smell that. I really, I never, never do. I mean, I smell, I'll go out into our feedlot and stuff, you know, and our cows, you know, they've got their little smell, but I don't ever smell it beyond our place. I don't think anybody, no one's ever, you know, and then we've got a hog barn that's just down, not too far from you, Tucson, you're just north of Lyons there, and we've never had a complaint on smell with that, and there's a neighbor not too far from there.
I, I believe that people have an exaggerated fear of that smell. But I would say also, I'm old enough to remember when driving down the highway, you would really smell hogs.
Right.
And, you know, that might have been just 100 pigs.
Well, I think the new, the new barns and stuff that they're putting up now are designed to keep your smells, you know, at a minimum. And I would think that, my goodness, you know, with, right now, with the cost of fertilizer, these farmers are just dying to get, you know, hands on fertilizer rather than having to buy.
That artificial stuff is made with oil and stuff, too. It's not natural.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, thank you for, for that comment.
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, my heart went out to him because I know, I know how he's feeling, so, yeah.
Thanks, Chris, for your time.
Thank you very much.
Item number 14 is the auditor's office briefing. We are blessed today with three briefings.
Morning, Commissioners, Ben Kite from the auditor's office. So, yeah, I'd like to share with you some of our experiences we've had for last year and maybe take this opportunity to just kind of talk about the election process since we hear a lot of comments from organizations and kind of, you know, re-impress the controls that are in, within that process, make the, you know, the community more comfortable with what we're doing. So first, I talk, talk about, next slide, what, what we did in 2021. So this is, I, I put together this dashboard on a monthly basis just to share with the staff, kind of give them a sense of all the work that we're doing, right? We're responsible for elections, which again, is kind of a smaller part of the office, but a larger part of what the public perceives. But we're also responsible for administering the taxes that are paid to the county and making sure those are paid out to all the taxing districts, being cities, schools, townships, those sort of things. We are accounts payable for the county, so as a treasurer's office, it's accounts receivable. We're accounts payable, paying all the bills. You know, payroll, we've got about 650 people that we pay on a bi-weekly basis. We're taking payments on liens, keeping track of all our capital assets, the accounting process, document management, you know, all the contracts, all the recording of minutes, all those types of things. And then we're the controller, the controller in the accounting and the budget officers for the county. So, you know, you can see that we've, right now, we have about, at the end of the year, we had a little over 125,000 registered voters. We've already added 1,000 to that. We're over about 126 and a half thousand voters as of 4-1, you know, process, about 29,000 vouchers a year, which is kind of a staggering number, about $350 million in expenses. You know, that includes all the tax apportionments that we do. Payroll, again, about 650 employees, $47 million in expense. You know, the, you know, the taxes, although we, we collect a lot of taxes, a small part, maybe 15 to 20% stays with the county, the rest of it's apportioned out to, like I said, school districts and townships and those sort of things. We did issue some new debt in the county last year to help complete the construction of our highway, new highway shop and remodel the extension building. I think our, our timing was very good. We, you know, got a very good, you know, 20-year rate on that, and, you know, I think that kept our costs down. Public records is one that we've seen a big increase, a lot of public records requests, primarily for election-related information. That's becoming a challenge for us to keep up with. And then we've been, you know, last year, we addressed tax payment plans. We had several that we were able to either have got paid off or rescinded the plans because they weren't paying on those. We, we've got that down to a more manageable number at this point, and we'll continue to make sure that, you know, people pay on those taxes. But anyway, that kind of just gives you a flavor of the, the stuff that, that we do. 2021, I, I would, next slide, I would just, I kind of described this as a year in transition, primarily because we just had a lot of staff movement, right? I think it's, as I call it, the great reshuffle out there of all, everybody looking for new jobs, taking new jobs, we had a large turnover, just like the rest of the world had, you know. But I think through 2021, I would say that we built an outstanding team. We had good employees before. I think we just have now great employees that we have replaced them. They, they do a fantastic job, and I think that will serve the county well going forward. Election staff, you know, we, we purged over 3,000 inactive voters, and we completed our legislative redistricting affecting about 30,000 voters. That was a monumental task that we were given at the end of the year, first, and going over to the first year. We just did an outstanding job there. We, I think we're, as I see the election process, we, you know, just looking at some of the stuff that we process just for this, during the city election, we, we process over 5,500 transactions from middle of March to the middle of April. And we've added over 1,200 voters in, in five months. The volume of those transactions are in our office is just becoming, you know, harder and harder for, we have one election coordinator. I'm, I'm beginning to appreciate that we probably will need two. It, it's just the, you know, the growth in, in the metropolitan area and the, the process that the state has, right? We don't allow people to do anything online. It's got to be, you know, some sort of paper that's sent to our office if, for us to be able to keep up the volume. I think we just need more people to be able to manage that. Accounts payable, as I mentioned, we processed about 29,000 vouchers of payments last year. I'm trying to move us to a situation where we're paying bills through ACH versus these manual checks. We've kind of got the process established. It's just that we're unable to focus on it until we get through the election, right? But I, that's still a goal of mine to kind of move us that way. Payroll, again, we had 650 employees that we have to pay bi-weekly. We had, we started the year with a, a new payroll accountant. She did an excellent job, took us through the, the end of the year, and now we, we promoted her. So we've got another new payroll accountant that started. She seems to be catching on very well, but just, you know, another one of those challenges. We have a capital assets accountant, another new person. You know, she does a lot of our accounting entries. She's done an excellent job. Tax administration, you know, again, we portioned about $300 million in taxes to 60 different taxing districts. It's, you know, it's, for all these taxing districts, you know, school districts, cities, all those, this is a very important function, because this is how they get their, their revenue, right? And we have to make sure we get those done correctly. The person who's been doing that job for several years is Mary Zeeb. She's going to be retiring in May after a year, 18 years of service for the county. She does a great job, so there's going to be a lot of institutional knowledge that leaves when she leaves. But we've got somebody in place to kind of come in after her. They won't replace her, but I'm sure they will do a good job. But I wanted to make sure we recognize Mary's long-term service here for Minnehaw County. We have a, a finance and budget officer that's really serves as the, the controller for the county. She's, she came in the middle of last year, took over from a long-term employee. I think everybody's very happy with Susan Beaman. She's doing a great job. She brings a lot of experience. She's been managing her, our ARPA grants, you know, doing a lot of financial planning. So I rely on her a lot as I'm kind of in the election process to kind of allow her to kind of take over that key responsibility. Commission recorder, another key role that we have. She was new here, done a great job. She allowed us to transition to the civic clerk, which I think is, with the commission office, has made this process much easier. She manages all the FOIA requests. There's a lot of those that are coming that we're just struggling to keep up with, so she's doing a great job. And then just all the other things that we did. You know, last year, we had three road district requests, something we haven't had here for a long time. We handled the medical cannabis licensing. We, we have, you know, tax payment plans. We issued some more debt. We had a tax deed sale. It was just, you know, kind of went on and on. In 2022, I think one of the things that we'll look at doing, that we need to look at, our precinct boundaries, you know, after the legislative redistricting. We see that we have a lot, we used to have our precincts that were kind of aligned with the legislative districts, and now we have a lot of precincts that cross over. We didn't have the opportunity to make those boundary changes for the precinct this year. That's something we need to look at next year. So that's kind of what we did in 2021 and what we do in the office. I thought it'd be important to kind of just, you know, take this opportunity to also kind of talk about the election process and give our opportunity to talk about really what's going on versus the other information you might hear from organizations up here. So I'll start at voter registration, you know. So voters can register to vote when they renew their driver's license or when they, they can just fill out a form in our office, right? There's lots of other locations they can pick up voter registration, but that's kind of where it all starts. And there's a lot of controls within the voter registration process, you know. So when you, I, one of the things I, I see out there, there's a misconception of that the control within the voter registration is in that piece of paper. The piece, you know, the, the registration form. In my view, that piece of paper isn't the control. The control really is in the system that we use to verify who that voter is. So when you fill out an application, we will input that to our voter registration system. It will confirm that the driver's license number, you know, or you could just give us some, four of your last social security number, but we'll check the address, we'll check the date of birth, your spelling and your name, those type of things confirm that you, you are who you say you are. If you move, you know, from or to a different location or county, that's information shared, so those, your voter registration is updated. Coroner's report, so on a daily basis, we receive information from the Secretary of State's to this, our total vote, which is our voter registration system. So on a daily basis, we are removing registered voters who have passed away. So we get that information regularly. You know, felons, they're flagged in the voter registration system, so they can't vote. You know, there, you have to register at least 15 days prior to the election to be able to vote. And then the purge process, right? So if you don't vote for what we'll call four election cycles or four presidential elections, you will be removed from the voter registration rolls, right? So that's, I think we've, here are people who question the voter registration rolls, but there's a process to look through the rolls on a regular basis. Every other year, we look through those and check to see if you, you voted in the recent elections. If you haven't, you'll be purged, or you haven't voted in the last two election cycles, you'll be put on an inactive status, and what that means, and if you go to the polls, try to vote, you would just have to fill out a new, or update your voter registration to make sure you're still living where you say you are, right? And yes, you know, again, there's some comments from individuals about, well, somebody is registered in a certain, at a certain address, but they're, but they live someplace else. And, and our state law doesn't require people to update their voter registration address if they move. And there's probably a lot of good reasons for that. You know, I use an example of, you know, I'm sure our governor, who lives in Pierre, is not registered to vote in Pierre's. She's registered to vote back, she live, her hometown, right? We know lots, all of us know many people who live, might be registered in Sioux Falls, but maybe they live six months of the year someplace else, because that's what they've chosen to do. So I, I just make sure that we realize there's a reason for people who are, might be registered in one location, but vote in another. So I think, you know, we need to look at ways to make it easier for people to update their voter registration. I think that's one of the reasons that we don't have, you know, people making those changes, because it's not easy. You have to complete another form, you have to send it in. That's just impediment to voters. The Secretary of State's office had proposed some legislation that allowed people to update the voter registration online. I would have supported that. I think that's something that we need, we need to look at. I think South Dakota is one of 12 states that doesn't allow online voter registration. We're in the minority, and, you know, I think we need to work for our legislators to get, make those changes. I'll talk then about absentee voting. So there's no requirement to vote, if you want to vote absentee, you can vote without any reason, right? So absentee voting is based off our needs. It should not be based off of a small minority's view of how the process should work. And I think that's what we have. We have a small minority view of people who believe that everybody should vote at the polls on Election Day, where I think that's their view. The reality is our lives are very complicated, and if we want to allow people to be engaged in the process, we need to make voting accessible to them, and that's what absentee voting does. So to vote absentee, you can do it one or two ways. You can do it in person, or you can do it through the mail. In person, it's just, you can come down to the auditor's office during the absentee voting period and ask to vote, and we'll allow you to do that. Or you can ask us to mail you a ballot, which we will do. So the voter, if they send us an application, we just require them to provide a copy of their voter ID or a copy of their driver's license primarily, or have the application notarized. And then that voter can, would be sent that ballot within the, during the 46-day primary general election absentee period, and then they'd have to return it to our office by 7 o'clock on Election Day. So the control here then is that, you know, that voter returns it to us, they must sign the return envelope, and that, and that signature is then verified against the signatures we have in file from the. and that, and that signature is then verified against the signatures we have on file from the voter. And then additionally, there's a barcode on each one of those envelopes that go out that we scan in to confirm that that's the ballot that we sent out. So I, I think there's, you know, within the absentee voting period or voting process, there's a lot of controls that make sure that we have it. You know, we're getting the right ballots back. I'll go on to the next page. So, and then there's a, a process. If you live overseas or in the military, you can request ballots to be, to vote. Some of the things, maybe just to make sure, I think most of the elected officials understand the process of how, what happens. But, you know, a candidate, if they want to get on the ballot, they have to submit petitions. You know, we certify the petitions and the candidates. We being the auditor's office, you know, ballots, you know, once all those petitions are submitted, we then create the ballots and submit those to our printer. You know, we've, just as we've done now, we've requested the ballots for the primary. They should be arriving in the next couple of days. We have our absentee ballot, our voting period that starts on the 22nd of April for the primary. So we, you know, to kind of make it even easier, with, on that ballot, we will, we print the name of the precinct that each one of those ballots belong to. That makes it easier to identify those. We train our poll workers for the election. And then, you know, one of the things we, we, on the tabulating machines that we, individuals talked, spoke over here before, we do multiple tests on those to make sure that the, a system is counting correctly. So we'll get test ballots from our, our vendor. We'll run through, through multiple times to make sure that they're calculating the right ballots. We'll create test scripts ourselves, run those through there, making sure so we're very comfortable that that's, the tabulating machine is calculating things correctly. And then we run those several days before, and then we run it the day of the election as well to make sure that there's still being counted correctly.
So one of the questions that I hear a lot of is that the concern that they're being, that they're on the internet and therefore they're subject to manipulation because either electronic voting or the tabulator machines that we use are connected to the internet and therefore not secure. Can you address that concern?
Sure, yeah. So I think that's just another piece of misinformation that is propagated out there. So the, the tabulating machines are not in any way connected to the internet. There's no wireless device on them. All they, all they do is scan the ballots and, and count the results, right? That's, there's, only thing that's connected is an electrical cord, right, to run those. So it runs through those. What happens, it wants, it counts the ballots. We have a, what we call a thumb drive that we put in, onto the, the tabulator that downloads those results. We, you know, we have four tabulating machines, so we have to somehow amalgamate the results from all four of those. So we take the thumb drive from, that has results on tabular machine one, and we load that on a, a laptop computer. And that laptop is also not connected to the internet. And it's, it's, it's a specially designed laptop that you have to have certain cards or, you know, plugged into it just to turn it on, right? And it's, so it's highly secure, there's no internet connection there. But that's got software that will then allow us to amalgamate the results from all, all the tabulating machines and create a report that tells us what the results are. So the only part that might be considered on the internet, right? So once those results are calculated on that machine, we save those to another flash drive that we would then take to a computer that we could then upload to the Secretary of State's office, right? So that's just really the communication piece. Results have already been calculated and they're separate on a separate computer that doesn't have any internet connection. So there's no way for anybody to, to hack this, right? It is just, it is one, I would consider one of our gold standards of how we, how you should process those votes, you know, electronically.
One of the comments that keeps coming up too is that they would like to go back to all paper ballots and, which we do use paper ballots, but they want them counted by hand. Is there any, I mean, our last election went fairly well. You guys were out of here by 10 o'clock. Want to speculate at all at how many hours it would have taken you to count all of those ballots in this election by hand and then verify again, because I'm going to assume you've got to count them quite a few times if you count them by hand.
Right, so I guess let's unpack that a little bit, right? So let's say that we want to vote or calcu, or count our votes by hand, right? So Minnehaha County is approaching 100,000 votes in a general election. And let's say that you have 10 questions on there. I think that's probably small, but let's say it's 10. So you've got a million, then if you, you know, a million different responses that you would have to count, right? And I'm, I'm not a statistician, but I would think the probability of you getting a group of people together that could manually count those accurately compared to a machine is at or approaching zero. You just can't, humans can't do that. They can't focus that well, right? So you could get, I'm not sure how many people you need, whether 100 or 1,000, right? Again, a million different responses that you have to count that you think would be accurate. So I, and reason we use machines is because we have found that they're just more accurate than, than humans in counting things. I came from a organization that had, you know, we had over 100 million customers, right? We, one of the first thing as we started to grow, we knew that we needed to, if we want to improve accuracy, we have to remove the human element. And that is what we did. You know, we relied on automation. And it's the same thing with voting. If you want to have accurate votes, you need to use some automation. And then let's back it up a little bit. If you think that you'd be more accurate or less fraud on a, with situation where you have humans counting, so you've got to hire, I don't know how many people. I think it's more than 100, maybe 1,000 people, that you think you can trust each one of those people to not, not only make an error, but decide that they don't like that vote? I, I think, you know, you've, you remove the probability of, of fraud by using automation by, rather than having all those people involved. That would be my perspective on that.
Thanks, Ben.
Yeah.
Commissioner.
Commissioner, hold on. Go ahead.
Well, bottom line, we have paper ballots and we know the names of each person that cast a ballot, whether it's absentee or in person. So we don't have a bunch of ballots that came in anonymously. They all come with the name of the person who cast it. Let me also say that I think, you know, we, we count with a machine. Which would be more reliable, a bunch of bozos from the, off the street that don't have a job or a machine? When, when you go to the bank, do they count your money with like somebody they just hired? I, I once had to count a bucket of coin with my colleagues at the phone company. And we, each six of us came up with a different total at the end of the count and had to start over. Or send it to someone that had a machine that could count it. We, anyway, I, I think that we do a great job here. I do have other questions, but Gerald had his hand up.
I don't know how to follow that, but I would say that the thing that I would like to address just generally is that there was some conversations in public, comments about the financial investment that the county made of 400 and some thousand dollars. All those dollars were federal grants that were have a funds to be able to buy the equipment through the state's approval to use those dollars specifically for the purchase of those machines. So we did not, in our budget, sure, we paid for them, but we got grants for them through the state to be able to buy that. So it was a wash account, if you will. There was no separate line item for the expense of those have a funds that I'm aware of.
You know, and I guess, I think what, you know, we see organizations with disinformation. I think, to me, what it appears to be is that they want to cast doubt on the process, right? It's not that there is any doubt, it's just that they will present some portion of the information that casts doubt. And I think it's incumbent upon us as elected officials to make sure that we're educating the public on a regular basis because there does seem to be a strong movement out there to cast doubt or create the appearance of some sort of impropriety where there isn't any, if you have all the information. So, you know, I'll, I'll continue here.
We'll let you finish up.
Yeah, so I just, you know, for election day, you know, we have, you know, we use a lot of supplies. There's poll books, which are just the printed version of the poll books, which is a list of everybody who, who's eligible to vote. You know, we, we provide voting brews, express vote machines, those for this able people and various other supplies that are delivered to the polling locations. So we talked about, we use paper ballots. And, you know, when people vote with those paper ballots at the precinct, they put them in a sealed ballot box that is sealed until it comes back to the auditor's office and we remove those ballots. You know, again, use the express voting machine for disabled, the tabular machines. So we don't, we keep them in a locked room. We don't, so we don't have to move them and they're, you know, used regularly. And the election wear is the software, as I talked about, that kind of amalgamates all the results from those different tabulating machines. So, you know, if somebody goes into, goes to vote at the polling center, they must show some sort of ID for them to vote. You know, there's situations where their name might not be on the, the poll book. You know, quite often we find that they're just registered at a different location. We have to send them over there. But if they insist that they are registered, we, we allow people to vote and they just have to sign an affidavit. And those could be provisional ballots that we will then go back and check, confirm whether they're a registered voter or not. And then, you know, on election day, you know, when the polls, the polls close, the election workers will reconcile the number of ballots cast to the number of ballots delivered. So those are the people at the polling places. We, we tell them, we give them a form to complete. How many ballots did we give you? How many ballots did you give out? So they know that they're going to bring back the correct number of ballots. So the ballots are delivered to the election center of the auditor's office. Ballots, you know, they're counted by our staff and the, the number of ballots counted are reconciled to the number of ballots that are responded. So that sheet that, that comes back from the polling center, when we count each precinct, we're reconciling back and forth to make sure that we've got the right number of ballots. You know, we, we do count the, or open the absentee ballots throughout the day. So on election day, we, like for the city election, we had a little over 4,300 absentees. We have absentee board that will open those so we can start counting those throughout the day. They'll kind of expedite the process. Although we count them, we don't display any of the results until after the polls are closed. You know, if we have a, during the counting process, we have a resolution board. So if there's any question on a ballot, sometimes we might receive a blank ballot or, or the marking on there isn't clear. The resolution board is responsible for reviewing those and making a decision on how that ballot should be counted, if at all. So, and then, yeah, the absentee board opens all the absentee ballots. You know, once we've counted everything, we, we produce results and we do submit those to the Secretary of State's office. So that, and then the auditor's office would confirm that the votes that we have, we have in our, our reports match those Secretary of State's office. And then following, you guys are involved in the canvas that follows a couple of days after that to, you know, to confirm the, the results. And just a reminder for the public, right? We are always looking for election day help. So if you're interested in helping with the election, please contact our, the auditor's office. We'd love to have good people to help us there. So, you know, I guess a couple of things I would just close with add is that, you know, again, it's, it's a responsibility of us as elected officials to create trust in the election process and speak up against any disinformation from, you know, any populist groups. South Dakota's election process, I think, is really the gold standard for what should we do in the US. There's no interest, you know, and then, you know, I guess some, as we see some of these interest groups, special interest groups talk about the election process. Rarely do I see them talk about the city election or the school board election. It seems like they're just interested in the primary or the general. And if you're truly interested in the election process, you would realize that all elections are important. I'm sure the, the mayor and the city council who were just elected, we think their, this election, their election was just as important as what will happen in the primary. So I, sometimes I think they're just a little disingenuous in, in what the information they're presenting. So that is my report and be open to any questions. I did ask Tom Greco from the city of Sioux Falls to come if, to provide some sort of outside view and how he thought the, the election went for the city. If I'd like to have him come up and just say a word or two.
Okay, Tom, we'd love to have you come on.
Thank you, Ben and county commissioners. Just a few words, and mostly I wanted to speak to the absentee process because we had the absentee ballot task force a couple of years ago after the primary election. I'm very comfortable with the new process that has been developed. Between Ben and I and his staff and my staff, we did a lot of work to kind of review those recommendations that were made. And I think you'll find on primary day, and then again on the general election day, that many of those tasks were implemented. And a lot of it even starts before the absentee process begins on election day. So everything from the kind of equipment we use to how we store the ballots, to how we organize them, to certainly how we process them on election day. So really, one of the key things I wanted to speak to was that absentee process. I think you'll find it leaps and bounds upon, above what you've seen prior. Also, the other thing is just the general election process in, in general. I think it went very well this year, very detail oriented. The counting process, I think, was top-notch, very organized. And as I said, the absentee process as well. And while I'm up here, I do just want to make one more plug about the, the technology that we use is phenomenal, okay? And just to put some of those numbers in perspective, you know, you may have spent $400,000 on machines in the past eight years, but you also spend about $50,000 on workers probably every election. Those machines are well worth it because if you want to go to hand counting, remember you're using folks who have been up since probably five in the morning to count those ballots at night. And we have a lot of ballots. So, you know, again, trust in those machines. They are very independent, obviously, of the, of the internet. And they are tested rigorously before each election by staff. So we got a great process in place. I think you have a great auditor in place. Look forward to a, a great primary. Now, I will say we were done just before 10:00 PM on last Tuesday, but I do just want to caution folks that you will have more ballots. So it may take a little longer, but just trust that you, that you have a very efficient process to look forward to. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
Unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions for Tom?
Not for Tom.
Question? Okay, for Ben.
Not for Tom specifically, but just to congratulate Ben on the last election. It did seem to be run very well, your first one out of the chute. And congratulations on getting that done. Recognize our, our deputy auditor, Kim, has done a fantastic job. I was sitting as a chair last year and got to work with her. And Kim does a great job, so thank you for a good hire on that. The only thing I would say is I think your math is off. Because when I look at your, the election as it's up there, I mean, people could be voting for 25 different.
Yeah.
And, I mean, 25, on, on a single ballot, and that doesn't include the initiated measures or any of the other stuff that might float onto there. Boy, you know, 75,000 voters and, you know, take that times even 20. I mean, you're at 1.5 million checkmarks on, on ballots. I think people would go completely insane if they had to sit there and count that much, so.
Yeah, that's correct.
Great point.
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah. Sometimes when you unpack these things, it just, it, it makes sense. We do things why we do things, right? I just wanted to point or say too that I really appreciate it. Tom was a great partner with us in this election. He helped us tremendously getting it ready and I look forward to working with him in the future.
Commissioner Burr.
Now for something completely different. Let me say that if someone's really interested in this, they should carefully listen to your whole spiel, but they just will pick up some snippet and throw smoke at it. But liens, we talked a bit. But liens, we talked a bit ago about our public defenders and, and stuff. And when they cover somebody in a, in a case, there's a lien attached to them. Same thing with paying the rent, paying for medicine, paying for food. In the past, under the previous auditor, there was an issue we had with getting those liens updated. And so, we would wind up with a lien that had been sent in, you know, six months ago that had not been applied. And then, we forgive the lien that we, that was already in existence and, and it's not current. The current amount isn't on there. So, are you, have you paid any attention on that issue?
You know, that process, we, we have somebody who's focused on that. Some of it has to do with the information that comes from the other departments, right? You know, it might take, for example, the public defender, the public advocate's office, six months to a year to close out a case, right? We've placed a lien on it, but they still have the case there and hasn't, and lien has been processed. It's a very manual process and it, you know, for us to really address that, it needs to be, have some automation placed against it to improve it. But right now, it's just very manual. We're kind of having to enter those things into a system that just takes a long time.
As it is right now, we are owed in excess of $40 million by citizens that we've helped. And we need that money back so we can help others anyway.
Thank you, Commissioner Barth. Any other comments? Thanks, Ben.
Well, thank you very much for your time, we're going along.
Yeah, a little bit longer than normal, but these were important issues that we were expecting to talk about today. So, thank you very much for your time. Item number 15 is a special personnel action, eliminating the senior project engineer position.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I have a pretty straightforward request for you. The reason it's showing up as a special action is because we're filling a assistant department head level position with the transfer. It's a very practical approach because the intent is to eliminate the resulting vacancy. Steve's here if you have any questions, but it is just a request to make the transfer.
Any questions for Carrie or Steve? For motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 16 is consider a motion for the extension of the COVID sick leave. Carrie?
This item, you probably recall from January, was an ARPA funded sick leave bank to help for COVID-related illnesses. We implemented that when we had several COVID cases. Thankfully, our numbers are down significantly. We're still asking for your approval to extend this through September just to allow us a period of time to determine whether or not the cases are going to stay low.
So, is there questions or a motion?
I think it makes sense. We haven't had, sorry, haven't had any real abuse that we can tell of the system. So, I'll let Commissioner Bennigan move for approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 17 is consider a motion for the extension of the double pay for the sheriff's office and the juvenile detention center.
This one, you probably recall, was also approved about the same time as COVID sick leave. The reason this was implemented was to help cover some of those staff shortages that we had in our shift areas, mostly due to those COVID-related illnesses. Since then, unfortunately, we've still continued to have some staffing challenges. We think we're in a much better position to have those filled, but we're asking for your approval of this extension for any type of staffing-related issues just for about approximately another month. Jeff Gromer is here if you'd like to ask him any questions, but it's been filling a big need for our department and trying to recognize and encourage staff to volunteer for those shifts when we're short.
Questions? Just make a comment. Okay, Commissioner Barth or Bender, excuse me.
Yeah, I don't have a question, but you're welcome to come forward because you always have a comment, I'm sure. I, I just would say that this, you know, we got behind when COVID was so rampant and really we're at risk of really burning out a lot of our staff. So, extending this for another month, in my mind, just gives us time to, you know, we've got, we've been working hard to rehire folks, get those folks trained up, which is not a short process. These people have very responsible, important jobs and so there's a long period of training. But I don't think there's, I would really hope that this is not any sort of long-term patch. This is it, if we get through May, then, then our goal is that we should be caught up. You can correct me where I was wrong.
I agree. I don't have much to add to that. Obviously, it takes, when staff resign, they hopefully give you a two-week notice. So, it's two weeks to lose a staff member. It's about 12 to gain them back. So, at the height of COVID, when we were losing a lot of staff, we had fairly high turnover rates earlier in this year and we're still trying to recover from that. We're in a, we're in a pretty good position when I look at the numbers of people were brought on, that we've been able to bring on. The salary adjustments that you all recently agreed to have helped dramatically, but it does just take us a little bit of time until we get that time accomplished to get these vacancies refilled. We're still leaning pretty heavy on the current staff who have already been really stepping up to cover these vacancies throughout this process. So, that's basically the, that and everything Commissioner Bender said is kind of the reasons for our request.
Any other questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 18 is authorize the chairman to sign the service agreement with Accurate Controls. Warden, good morning.
Good morning. This is a service agreement with Accurate Controls for the security electronics in the jail. Pretty cut and dry. It's the door controls, the cameras, the whole gamut of things that make us operate.
Automation, so we don't have to have a handful of keys.
Automation.
I would make a motion to sign the agreement with Accurate Controls.
Second.
I have a motion a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you. Item number 19 is to approve or deny an ordinance to adopt the 2022 International Building Code with amendments.
All right, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. The next three items are actually all interrelated and very closely linked together because the International Building Code, this item here, the IBC, is part of a three-year code cycle that updates by, from the International Code Council that writes these, large books that are used in the field to determine the minimum standards for new construction. County staff works closely with the city of Sioux Falls on these updates to make sure that our ordinance largely mirrors, if not the same, as what the city of Sioux Falls does. That way, contractors don't have to be confused when moving from the city to the county or vice versa on which building code they need to follow. Staff also has worked with the Home Builders Association of Sioux Empire. They have noticed of this and I know they have noticed through newsletters and other ways to their contractor's list of the upcoming proposal to amend these ordinances. If, once adopted, the plan is to have these become effective on May 31st, which is the day after Memorial Day. It's the start of that week. I will just maybe cover a couple of things that were brought up at the last meeting. The building permit fee schedule was included with the International Building Code, this item. Maybe you can bring that up. Oh, it might be a ways down there. There was a lot of things posted into this, a lot of pages to, to go through. But you'll see that our building fee schedule for the building code does not change from what we have adopted in the past. Our current building fee was, became effective May 1st of 2020, so it's a couple of years old now. The way that this works is we figure the value of a structure based on the square foot of that structure and then take that valuation times a percentage to figure out the fee of the building permit. Right now, for example, we calculate the finishable, finished habitable space at a valuation of $91 a square foot. And then you, so if you have a thousand-square-foot house, you look at a 91,000 valuation on that 1,000-square-foot house. And then you take that times 0.4%. Typical building permit fees for a new dwelling, for example, run somewhere between $1,000 to about $1,500 for a new house, depending on the size of the house. And to, I guess I, this is kind of skipping ahead to items in the next item because there's three different ordinances.
Can we approve this one and then move on, is that all right?
If you want to do that, that works. I was just going to cover some of the building cost changes in the International Residential Code, but.
Just want to know where I can find someone to build for $91 a square foot.
Yes.
I guess we'll let you finish out and then we'll just approve one at a time.
Okay, yeah, because in the packet for the residential code, I included the, the expected cost changes. And the reason why I put it in the residential code is because that's the code that is affected for the cost changes. The Home Innovation Research Labs is the, the company or the, the place that produces a cost change document for the new building code changes. Staff looked at those and reviewed those against what we are proposing to adopt. And although the Home Innovation Research Labs does have a significant increase in cost, many of those cost items are removed from the ordinance entirely or if you look at them closely, are rarely applicable in this area. One example that I would point out was there is an increased cost in what goes behind a stucco, stucco clad house. But the last time we had a house that was a stucco house, I, I don't even remember when because it's just not a common building practice in this area. So, the cost of increase of that is not typically effective in this area. So, I guess I'll just leave it at that with the cost changes being minimal or in some cases, an improvement on the area, on those items. So, I'll go back to the International Building Code and I can take any questions for that one.
Any questions? Your motion?
Move to approve the International Building Code with amendments.
Yes, I mean, second.
You have a comment, Commissioner Bennigan?
Yeah, I have a lot, but I don't know if I should make them. I've heard these for 20 years from city activity, county activity. And we talk about affordable housing, but the book keeps getting thicker and thicker and thicker. Nobody takes anything out of it. How are we supposed to meet some of the needs of the affordable housing shortage that we have in this community and keep adding costs to it all the time? What kind of contributions has the Home Builders Association or recommendations that they've made? How has that affected some of these? Because I've heard from that particular group regularly and they make recommendations, but they're not comfortable with what they have to deal with.
Well, I've talked with, I'll begin with talking with Todd Anowski. That's the, the person who is, works with the governments on that Home Builders Association. He had no issues with the changes. And also, just bring up the, so as part of this and the reason why there's so many documents on the screen is the, let's see, the built, International Building Code document is 37 pages long and those 37 pages is, is what is being removed or altered from the existing. I know the last time that it was brought up, like the swimming pools, well, that is an alteration of what the building code says. So, our changes to swimming pools does allow for things like you don't need to put a fence around a swimming pool if you have no neighbors because in the rural area of the county, there's a lot of places you don't have any neighbors. So, that sort of thing as well. The big change this year was the International Building Code was changing the energy efficiency for houses, requiring more insulation and more sealing. And, and this year, we and the city has not adopted those changes based on the recommendations.
It just seems to be, there's got to be some balance in this process. I mean, we can't continuously add paper qualifications and not expect that to affect the housing cost. And I don't know what the answer is because it's a magnificent book if you need some reading material to go to sleep at night. But it really does add cost to a home and it was estimated somewhere around $5,000.
That was the, the Home Innovation Research's estimate. When I reviewed it, my estimate takes it closer to, let's see here. So, somewhere between 0.1 to 0.4%. So, a few hundred dollars to maybe a thousand dollars on a new house build. And that's also relative to the target house that the Home Builders Association, or that, excuse me, that the document uses is a large 2,600-square-foot house. And as we alluded to, the construction of a 2,600-square-foot house is not going to be $91 a square foot. And it's not a starter home at that size. Starter homes are typically much smaller. The cost change would be smaller to, due to that as well. That's all part of it.
I don't have a solution other than the fact that I don't think it's being a reality of what we're trying to accomplish versus what we're exposing our liability for making some of those changes. How many times have we changed the fire code and all that kind of stuff and never had a fire based on that code information?
Been saying it for many years, Commissioner. Been saying it for many years. And, you know, and it's not, if I may, Madam Chair. It's not a reflection on you. You guys have presented this to give to us to approve, but I, I have the same heartburn. I truly do. It drives me crazy. We keep pushing costs up because somebody did a new spray thing that you should put on something and it looks like a great idea. So, it's approved by this national board and it comes to us so that somebody can add more costs to a home. I mean, to me, that's what it boils down to.
And you guys are on the city council.
That's why they've seen it longer than us, so. I have a motion in a second to, no, I don't. Do I? Oh, okay, I do have a motion in a second on the International Building Code and it's a roll call vote.
Karski.
Aye.
Barf.
No.
Bender, aye. Bennigan?
No.
Hi, Burger.
Aye. Motion passes three to two. Gee, if I'd have said no, we'd have really had an issue. Okay, item number 20 is approve or deny an ordinance to adopt the 2021 International Residential Code with amendments. And I think we just talked about it, so I would look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion a second, roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barf?
No.
Bennigan?
I'm not going to make it futile. Aye.
Hi, Burger.
Aye, motion passes four to one. Item number 21 is approve or deny an ordinance to adopt the 2021 International Existing Building Code with amendments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second, roll call.
Bender.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barf?
No.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Hi, Burger.
Aye, motion passes four to one. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Item number 222 is authorize the chairman to sign a listing agreement for 908 Northwest Avenue with Nelson Commercial Real Estate.
Good morning, Tyler Clack, Commission Office. On April 5th, the Building Committee reviewed the responses for the requests for proposals for Realtor Services for 908 Northwest Avenue. The Building Committee's recommendation was to award the contract to Nelson Commercial Real Estate. The terms of those contracts, the highlights include a listing price of $1,150,000 and along with a 6% broker fee. The agreement is signed would begin April 29th, ending April 30th, 2023. Mr. Nelson has graciously sat here longer than I told him he needed to, so he can answer any questions if you might have them.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, do you have anything you want to say since you sat here through our whole meeting?
It was a very interesting meeting, so I learned a lot.
Good.
And got caught up on a couple of little work items and hopefully you weren't.
And got caught up on a couple of little work items that hopefully you weren't noticing. One thing I'd like to stipulate, and I do think part of the reason the property didn't sell before, is you've got some asbestos issues that need to be done. I actually, I don't know if you're aware of this, but I've brought a group through there already, and they might have some interest, we'll see, but I put my foot in my mouth when they said, oh, there's some asbestos there, and I said, no, no, not possible. You know, the county wouldn't possibly sell anything that has asbestos in it, when in fact I was told to try to insert or take that foot out of my mouth. So I guess I would like to ask and just have a clear understanding that that is indeed part of your plan, is to remove the asbestos in that facility, because no buyer is going to look at it seriously until you do.
I wasn't aware there was any asbestos.
I wasn't either.
Mark Crin isn't here today, so I don't think we can answer that question.
Yep. That's what I would say. We'll have to wait until we talk to Mark about it and get back to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
That'll be great.
That's all I have as far as.
Quick question.
Yes.
International building codes, what do you think?
I ain't going there.
Just kidding. Thanks, Ron.
Yep. I was going to say something about your comment about bozos, but I'm not going to even bring that up.
We have good people working in our elections, so.
Mm-hmm.
Item number twenty-two, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for coming, Mr. Nelson. Item number twenty-two is consider a motion to approve a request for compromise of lien of DPNO number 60345.
Thank you, Chairman. Carol Mueller, Commission Office. Before you today is a request to compromise the lien, and only insofar as the real property with no payment. You have the opportunity to do these maybe once or twice a month, and typically, they're never the same. There's always different things that are, that are in these different liens. In this particular situation, the mother, the spouse, the, the female in the, in the marriage and the relationship, has divorced her husband, who is now in prison, and is in the home, cannot afford the home to keep it. She has a pro bono lawyer who has been helping her out and actually made contact with all of this. She cannot stay in the house because she can't afford it. So the lawyer has worked with the mortgage company to allow her to stay in the home and put off foreclosure until she could get on housing. She has gotten on housing now, and the request is that you release this property from the lien, but it will still stay on her name and her ex-husband's name.
The petitioner is not here, so are there any questions for Carol? Commissioner Bender?
I'm sorry, this isn't a question, this is more of a comment. I mean, in my mind, this is a situation where, you know, we really don't have any great choices, but we're not going to get paid on this, on the house regardless, because if we don't remove the lien, it'll be foreclosed on, and we won't get paid. And so by removing the lien and leaving it on the two spouses, that it will give us an opportunity to possibly get paid in the future, will provide some source of income to the petitioner so that we can avoid, hopefully, other service needs from the county. And so I would, I'd make a motion to approve.
I would, second.
Go on, sorry.
No.
I do have a question for Carol, though. Carol, so since they're divorced, any continued or new charges that might be on the spouse who's in the penitentiary would be on their, their lien account, not on the, the one remaining outside the wall?
Correct.
Nicely said, Commissioner Bender. I have a motion in a second to approve. This is a roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Bennigan?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number.
I have one comment about this. After reading this, I just have to thank the attorney, the Realtor, the mortgage company, because this is probably one of the saddest stories, stories I've read in twelve years. Yes?
I agree. I'll agree. And the, the mortgage company let her stay in that house for a long time so that they could try to work through the process, so yes, a lot of people cared. All right. Item number twenty-four is authorize the chairman to sign a contract with Carpal Solutions.
Always fun to be the last thing.
I know.
Sitting in between people.
Move approve, no.
Approach lunch. I'll try and be brief. I do want to thank Carol, Monty, Jean, Eric, for their work on this project. I'm excited about it. I think it's going to be a good thing for Minnehaha County. Appreciate Tyler and the work that is going to be put on his plate. We anticipate that he's going to act as that project manager for the county. I think that this software will help my office gain some organization that it needs. It's going to help us with workflow, it's going to help us serve victims in Minnehaha County. Quite frankly, the investment that this commission is making is a big one for public safety, and so I thank each of you for that. Happy to answer questions, if you have any.
Any questions? We've heard about this many times. And been well-studied.
Move approval.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Get to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liaison reports? Any commission reports? Commissioner Bender?
I have just a brief report. The Accessible Housing Authority Board did a bus tour, trolley tour, to be more accurate, of some new housing solutions and some work that are being done primarily in the core of Sioux Falls. Very eye-opening. But, you know, just like the story here in the DPNO of people, good-hearted people who are in the business to make money but are else, but are looking out for other people's needs. That's the story here. I've got some pictures in case any of the commissioners or anybody's interested in, but, you know, projects, properties that were really a blight to the area that have been rehabbed and put back to use to provide housing to folks in need. As Commissioner Bennigan alluded earlier, I mean, housing is a constant need, and, you know, unfortunately, I think it's one of those things where the solution often is a lot of hard work that impacts just a few, and done over and done over and done over, and that was what I really took away from this tour. But it was, it was really interesting. It is a, it's something that we're continuing to look at. Also, on this MacArthur Grant, where we're looking at housing for justice-involved individuals, that's also another situation where there are no, no magic solutions, but a lot of good people who are willing to put in hard work, and hopefully, we'll be able to come up with some ways to help a few, so.
Additional liaison reports?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barrett?
So in, in my capacity as a liaison to planning and zoning, I asked Scott to model a potential ordinance for us based on the Brown County ordinance, doing a setback for pipelines to be fifteen-hundred feet from residential properties and six feet down underground. And, you know, the exact parameters that we should adopt may be debatable, but this is what Brown County did, and I'd like to put it on our agenda at some point. I think with second readings and all that stuff, it would take, you know, a hundred days, a hundred-twenty days to get it passed. But I, I have a copy here, but I'll have them send a copy to everybody.
Okay. Thank you. You can work through Carol. Any other liaison reports? Okay. I would look for any non-action commission discussion.
Commissioner's Carol Mueller, I just want to remind probably everybody listening more than you guys, that you all just don't walk out of here and show up next Tuesday again. Yes, some of you will be back in this room, with the room moved around in about an hour and a half. And by the way, for those that are here, we do have lunch for you coming, so we know that it's kind of a tight schedule. You've got that. You guys will all be back the next two days, as you've got equalization happening. So just a reminder that those are happening for you also. So looking ahead, we'll meet April 26th, you'll meet April, May 2nd. And then looking ahead, the task force is May 2nd and 3rd in the afternoons, and I, those are open to the public, they'll be posted, so all of you are welcome to come, because I know you can't do enough county work, each of you, you all want to do more. And then just a reminder that on May 10th will be the county tour. So that is not a commission meeting date, but we've got that down, so. And that does not even include all the other individual meetings that you guys have and the calls that you get, so you're busy.
Do you have, do you have hours on that county tour yet?
No. We are meeting, I believe, this week.
But it, it does end at a winery, right?
Possibly.
Possibly.
With a ride home afterwards.
So I anticipate that next Tuesday, we can probably cover.
Okay.
Those things. We're still getting stuff finalized.
Got it. We've had it on our calendar for a long time, but times would be great.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Carol. I look for a motion to recess until executive session, for about ten minutes.
A motion to recess. Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.